Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Arts and Culture Commission. Today is Thursday, April twenty first, two thousand and twenty two. Same form with the meeting sufficiently called order. Madam Recording Secretary, please take a call.
Commissioner McNair?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Russell?
Here.
Commissioner Wu?
Yes.
Commissioner Flores?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gallegos? Thank you, we have form.
Thank you. We will now stand for lunch of these parts. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all. Thank you. At this time, members of the Public, Media, Arts and Culture Commission regarding any non-agenda items within the subject matter of your session of the committee, no action may be taken on non-agenda items unless authorized by law. Does the public have any comments to share with the commission? Please note, we have three minute time limit.
Hi everyone, thank you for giving me three minutes in the body. I just want to say thank you to Ms. Tran for being here, helping with a lot of questions that I had and let us send invitations to all of you. So I mean, I thought we might do one of the things that I could, so I trust me. It's going to be July sixteen seventy. It's called that, it's called a date. It's going to be on Flower Street at six seven. And we're also going to run a webinar for the Arts Committee and for June eighth. So we are invited to those dates, and that's all I have to say. So thank you so much.
Are there any additional comments?
No.
Okay. Then this is the time for us to, for the commission to consider matters under consent of power, items number one and two. Do I have a motion to consider items one and two? Motion. Thank you, Commissioner, but I have a second. Second. Thank you. But maybe by this commission, and this vice chair, sorry. Okay, any comments or questions about items number one and two? All right, hearing them, then we'll call for a vote. Do all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the matter is approved by unanimous consent of all present. So we have one item under reports. We have those two. We have two items under reports. Please note that there will be no motion or action taken on these items. The items under reports is the commission based on ad hoc committees, I understand. So there's two reports on that ad hoc committees under the one item of reports. So the first one is the artists' community surveys. And that calls under me as I was on that ad hoc subcommittee. And when we started that, I attended a community and shortly thereafter, we had a change of folks on the commission. And so two of the three members of the commission that were signed to that ad hoc committee are no longer on the commission. That said, we have been redirecting our efforts to the artist economic and prosperity report. I attended a webinar today about that because I think that's an important way for us to gather exactly what the line goes to, surveys from the community and also to get even better data on the economic impact of the arts in San Ana. So I may be calling for an ad hoc subcommittee regarding that at a future point. And we will all be doing the community survey subcommittee, or going to do stuff. So that is more important. The next report is the artist registry. And we have three commissioners that work on that. It was Commissioner Wu, Commissioner Gallegos, and Commissioner Flores.
Oh, Russell.
Russell, my apologies. So who would like to start with that report? Who's doing the report?
Yes, so we are mid process, I would say. But an update would be that Commissioner Gallegos has had the opportunity to meet with someone from an organization called Public Artists this week. We haven't had a chance to meet to brief that meeting, but he's very excited about the nation with his gathering there. He's actually also, I think, spoken with this person with me on prior occasion because we did this talk about how other communities are using platforms. So sort of not for profit, but private platforms, or it's kind of like a yellow, which would, as an example, where artists not to move to operate by a city or walk away to city, but would still provide an avenue for artists to be able to communicate, you know, their services they can provide. And so if people are interested in hiring them for opportunities like that or commissions, you know, there would just be a more transparent and public process. We would hope something for the city might need to then help promote, so the artists would have greater exposure that way. We're also, we have plans to meet next week with some of the people who work on Long Beach Art Service. And so once we have the two meetings, then we'll hopefully share. And Commissioner Gallegos is here as well.
Fantastic. Very fantastic, and you. So that concludes our reports. We have two items under our study session. Please note that there will be no motion or action taken on these items. The first item under our study session is the discussion of downtown parking structure, mural requests, or proposals are FP. And we staff, Tran is going to give some context, so then we can have a discussion of that.
Yes, thank you, Chair McNair. The city, oh, council had allocated five hundred thousand dollars to go to murals to be painted on garages in downtown as part of ARBA and that kind of recovery and all of that. And so actually, our downtown base on UW Castro has been working very hard to refurbish the actual structures of the, of the working lots. I'm not sure if you have seen it lately, but literally every week, it's been, there's been a huge uptick in vandalism. They would bomb with graffiti and tacking all the floors, like every single wall, every single everything. And they've had to repaint and repaint it almost every week. To refurbish elevators, install surveillance cameras, power wash every two weeks because of this too. And hire twenty four hours of security. And that is also, you know, just to protect people around there, the visitors, all of that. It tends to happen with long weekends, you know, when there's, there's nobody around to just to have eyes on the structure. So she's had a lot of great work. We will start our garage mural around May to start planning. This is the time to start gathering feedback, we have some feedback about what, what we even like to see. I know we already discussed the need to be along the lines of the cura, cura. But if you have any more ideas or things that you would like to see as part of this mural part, mural portion? We're, we're looking at, we have our own thousand, we also have a little bit, probably the walls on the outside, this will be external murals. And also, so part of the wall, lighting it to keep it safe and also look good by. And then, hey, the artists, and of course, we're going to talk a little bit about the possibility of having an internship program attached to this, to this project. And ideally, there would be, we would work out three different garages. One each, there's four garages in downtown, San Ana, but one of them will be from our, so we want to closer time and level on that one. So there will be three that we're going to focus on. And I'm going to add that the downtown base on, and I talked about adding community involvement during the prepping of the wall parts, the paintings, that would be the ownership, you know, as you said, we're, so it would be in residence and business owners to, you know, clean and clean the walls. And we would provide all the supplies, of course, the city would provide. So that's, that's it about the update. So we're hoping to start the actual planning plan of this in May. Right now, we're still just gathering feedback and info. And then we'll execute it until the early winter of next year, twenty twenty three. These summer inquiries are projected and that the murals will be all up and ready. So we would have the year after, this whole art process already, you know, it takes months to release it, to the panel, review panel, select them, do the three minutes, and then finally, they can start working on it. But we're anticipating that to be around the end of the December twentieth, just end of this year. Hopefully, the three minutes are going to be done, the artists will be selected, and then they start their painting. Though, however, we are finished with the project.
Thank you, Tran, we appreciate that context. And so with that in mind, is there, are there any comments or questions from any of the commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Foles.
So this will be murals for all three of the parking lots?
Right.
Of an area?
Of an area. So I mean, then we'll be reading artists who we selected.
I'm quite curious, when it comes to the community involvement piece? Just knowing we have some amazing artists here in the city who really have worked on the involvement, or community involvement aspects of projects. Will that be something that artists are incorporated in terms of the design? Or will that be initially managed?
Julia, you were just thinking about the logistics of this, the park quality of painting, you know, prepping that wall. But I think we can consider, like, community input. I'm not sure, we could, we could think about that more. Because now we have to have community input and then, and then sort of the three artists are not just executing those ideas, you know? I don't, yeah, I don't know exactly how that's going to work yet.
Well, there's some great examples, I don't know if anyone's been to the Island of the Wessel. That alley, you know, it took us a very long project, I think, months and months. But as they were doing that, they needed, like, children to come and paint on the wall. Wasn't the end result, but, you know, you just had a lot of people who were paying attention to the wall and had their imprint on it, and I think that was such an important and valuable experience.
Okay.
Because she can collaborate with some artists who've done it and who have some insights about what works, but doesn't have you promote it, have you made it safe, you know?
So just clarifying, we're speaking to not necessarily community input on the content of what the mural would be, but community involvement with actual painting, is that what you're saying?
Well, both.
I know that after that later in the planning process, because in order to identify who the artists are going to be there, they want us to make some kind of concept.
Yeah.
So in order to submit a concept, how do we then activate the community to be able to give the input on what that will be? And then how does that drive what the artists submit for RP, and what it will achieve? You have to consider those two six, which kind of adds some timeline, I don't know, I'm just going to add there are some.
I, yeah, how can we get artists, just based on their qualifications alone then? You know, it's like, you're a good artist, you know, you're a good muralist, and then work with the community at some other concept? So we'd have to really repeat that whole approach. So would it be based on a design proposal? If we go this route? You know, it would be based just on purely who the, the review panel thinks is best qualified to execute any kind of mural of this?
And so we need, yeah, and we need to activate, like, artists throughout the entire city to have forums with people to give input to, equally, that's, I'm sure, other stuff coming, so that's all. I'll monitor my airtime and live this comment.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Miss Tran.
Thank you. My experience with working forums is, you know, that we have to work to get it worked out, where the people attend. We are these farmers and those, it's a, you know, it's a cool task to have to do a lot of work and then one or two people who are the same, or two people who attend, several. So, you know, just kind of making sure that we do, you know, put it out there, we do accept it, but in all sorts of ways. Promote it through social media, the cities, and, and have an email that folks can send, their suggestions to us. Imagine you can have at least one Zoom meeting where our forum, if not in person or hybrid, where we can get input from folks. I think that's important. I have a question, would we be able to, um, to guide, we're just making recommendations based on, and then if they would go to the city council, or would we have a?
Sorry, sorry, we, that was quite a response.
Would it be for, for the RP, so we would just hear them out, or if, or the panel, which is not, whatever, some of us will be on, and then they'll go to the city council, that's possible?
Um, usually, for amounts under fifty thousand, we don't have to go to the council. So it depends on what would be allocated to the artists. I think over that, yes, we would.
So in this case, then the panel would decide how we would get awarded?
Yes, yes, if they were under fifty. We still haven't done the math yet to see how much we're, you know, breaking it down, the budget that way.
Okay, because the budget is five hundred thousand, but not all of it will go to, to the artists or something?
No, not all of it, because like I said, we would have to still prep the wall, house, the exterior wall, the lights, that's going to be large, I think. And then the artists.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. So I, I support the ideas, Commissioner, Commissioner Russell, as far as any input from the community. And I do also enjoy the process that's been had in the past where, you know, young people, kids, you know, are involved in that process. We can have a little bit of everything, I think, and we can have that process. And also can approve and support a vision that a person has that, you know, maybe it's just that person doing the mural or that person is selected team under the umbrella of Futura Cura, which, you know, culture feels depending on the ethnicity, or, you know, the individual, they'll have a different understanding about what that means to them. So that it's really a big, I don't know, white gap, a white tent, you know, umbrella that a lot of artists could. So those are my comments, anything?
I have one more to tell about the involvement. I know we want to be professionally and officially and actively, but I think we also don't want to forget that we can help in that process. And I say that because I have a great privilege to involve some of the high school students I worked with, years ago, but in collecting surveys from the community as they were walking by, it was based right in front of the mural. And, you know, so, you know, I think it was equitable in that we're involving young people who were already been looking at this wall for a long time, and they were going to be able to, you know, encourage people and, you know, and enthusiastic responses from people in a survey format. So I, I think, you know, having Zoom and forums is all great, I think we should make sure that we, I'm told, driven, or the whole thing driven process, that we want all our community, all of us.
I think we could do it where, like, my chair and I said, have a role where we do the forums first. You know, so we're going to have to push back to start it, basically, our, if we solve that, pushing back, just to do the forums, social media, Zooms, attend schools, whatever it is, neighborhood association meetings, gather all their feedback, and then say, and then whatever themes come up, whatever, then we could, that is part of the call. We must have the, whatever it is that those, the folks have given us as criteria. And then they submit a proposal with that competing in the run. Or are you saying that the actual physical image should come from the community?
No, so when I was looking on a project, and Tran told me that I was my charge, at the heart of this project, we had students, we had two questions, what do you imagine would be the, in this city, and what do you want to see on that wall?
Okay.
And the high school students, you know, who obviously had a previous statement in languages, they went out with clipboards and they, I think, because they're young and inspiring, I think people, when they said, hey, we could spell the survey, there was a little more interest, I think, because of that factor. And so we got a great, a lot of great responses. Then some of the students helped us go through and code the surveys. And all we did was look for themes. And then we were able to pull out the top five themes, you know, what were, and what did people say they wanted to see their culture represented on the wall?
Yes.
Simple things like that, and we were able to share that feedback with the artist development team, or team that was developing it now. And they took that information and, you know, applied it in their own way. But, right, what I love about it is that we had young people who were charging with this idea, you have to say in your community, right? We're not, we're not telling people what's wrong with the wall. You have to say, I'm going to be involved in this class, that's a great volunteer opportunity for students. We have a great relationship with the, the city. I would be happy to volunteer some students that I work with currently. I just think it's very, I don't think it has to be a complicated, you know, forums and all, these things like that, I think, because it's simple and it can be really helpful.
Okay, that sounds very cool, if we do that before the art creates release, and then probably goes through the five themes, whatever, say, we must get those themes as you submit a proposal. And then the, the panel will then select the one that they want.
You know, based on the rubric that says how, like, we, we, and just to underscore, like, Commissioner Russell's saying, there has already been some practice in the community where artists are working on murals where they do in the forums, so we can let the students know if they want to show, and let them do too. So we certainly, absolutely would encourage that, with that as an incentive, and with students, we, as well.
Yeah, I just want to also mention the major organizations. So the first one, we're trying for the arts, we're trying for the arts, I think, and the other is the San Ana College for the artists. Both those organizations will develop this process and show how practical it will be.
Wonderful, thank you. Is there any further, yes, would I, Commissioner Foles?
Hello. Yeah, with regard to the outreach, so that would be city staff, community outreach, but that also belongs. And then my second question would be, is that outreach can be based in downtown, since the park is structured in downtown? But would it be like in reward or one based, you know?
Yeah, I think it's all of that. I think, yes, of course, we put attend, I guess, the neighborhood associations in downtown, there's downtown neighborhood association. That, we could focus on them, but then for these Zoom meetings, it could be citywide, because of course, they would visit downtown, they want to themselves, if that thing is there. So all, all of it. And it sounds more like, I mean, if commissioners could help, that would be great, but it would most likely be staff or organizing, this kind of. But I think that would be job, I would give a job to Commissioner Russell for sure, to do these components. And then as we develop this, and I would try to teach all of you, and to see where, you know, where, if you all can be helpful.
And just to reiterate, we're really at the beginning of trying to figure out the logistics, so this is second time, and it goes into next year. So this time tonight is to hear feedback from the commission to guide what this is supposed to look like. So what we heard so far is we really want to have this element around community engagement of input into the development of the mural. And then when we're executing and things are happening, we'll have community participation in touching, giving their hands on it in some way if they want to, and then they have collective community ownership of that. Are there any other things that we should have borrowed inspiration?
I'd also be interested in, we'll reach out to the youth commission of the city, right? So there's, there's, I think, I'm really happy to hear Commissioner Russell, you know, is telling to folks that to do this work. But no, I don't, I, I, but, you know, it's great with that. And we, and of course, Chair McNair has mentioned schools and teachers and such. So there's many a ways which we can and should, you know, people, you know, everybody here has connected. And Vietnamese youth, and Cambodian youth, and LGBTQ plus youth, and just all various groups of young people. I'll just say that the young people have been, are very useless in after almost two years of the pandemic. So it's not that complicated. And I think it just allows for, ability for more people to participate without having to go to in-person rooms. But also, like, intentional, like, in-person kind of engagement, and tapping into youth leadership already established, whether through the city or through schools, I think would be really important. So I think that they would be surprised what they would be able to, to contribute to this process. Very much interested in seeing, you know, their input in all things, so we got this commission of list, the young people. But also, let's, let's work with other folks that are also.
A hundred percent, I would love to underscore what was said to Vice Chair, that a youth commission is appointed just like we are, Vice, because we're a counterpart to each of us in youth commission, who also has funding in their own support. So I'm wondering, this is my question to you, Tran, is it possible that some kind of cross connection or, you know, with the, the youth commission, where we could partner with them to activate? Because they're going to reach the schools, they're going to reach all these other communities, the clubs, the organizations they're part of. And I know there are very, some need to activate the youth things. So regarding on how that works, we've got a plenty of brown acts and a lot of things, but what could we really, if we totally will consider some kind of intersection with this?
I'm not sure either, so let me look into that, like, how can we work together with the joint moving network that's working at that?
I think so, no comments. I think response to Commissioner McNair, this, this, you know, well, telling me might be a bit of my, but we do have a member of the audience, a member of the audience right now, who was engaged in the murals. And the pride that she speaks about that engagement to her teachers, to her classmates, to family members, to anyone visiting, that when she can point to a wall, say, I need to practice, is priceless. So I would tell a little bit of that, because I think every challenge to each should count on the team.
And thank you for reminding me, San Ana College as a mural voter, and a person who just went through that experience. So we can tune in that whole preschool, critical, the college, and the participation. So I love the whole vision of this commission, you can do for all your comments, and keep that to yourself. All right, Commissioner Wu?
It's actual, or not, I believe, and I believe, and I'm sure, like, sure, always have a higher interest to be right. But you know, this is for the martial art, and art will should affect the, where people have all the warrants, that's, and I know, if possible, it should, if, kind of move this, this, this. Just make sure that we're getting input from the others to be more.
Excellent. Is there any further discussion we can leave in this time?
That's awesome. So then the panel will be made up of us and maybe community members, or just us?
Probably one commissioner, and then other, could be a, in addition to a youth commissioner, say, and then other folks from the community. Yeah, it would be mixed, but not all, not all of our schools commissioners.
All right, thank you very much, we're happy to sit down with it, and it's still, um, sure. Okay, the next item under our study session, looks to the session is the discussion of arts and cultural master plan priorities and funding. What's the context or wants to leave the discussion on that? I'll set a little context, I know we discussed this earlier on, or my mission, we discussed this. I'll set a little context. I know we discussed this early on, or my initial, we discussed to now as a new commission and perhaps some of our newest commissioners to other commissioners' discussions, which is always good, because that's where the North started, that we like the Arts and Culture Master Plan, which we know is, was designed as a ten-year plan, but broken in twenty fifteen, that had five years of funding. And now we're in a situation where we are, we are working to cut the data and information we need for ongoing sustainable funding to execute this Arts and Culture Master Plan. And we have looked at it and we, we've been thinking about a process for identifying our priorities, or what the commission could forward. And what we can do at this point as a non-cost, or, because, but having funded. However, I think it would be great to consider making a plan and, and activating that, perhaps it's a subcommittee that can do that work to help surface our priorities as a commission that they can bring back and report on. So when we do get funding, which we are going to, that's our commission, then we keep hitting ground running. So, um, that said, what further discussion should we entertain about the, this one? It's very comprehensive. And one of the things that I noticed throughout this plan is it's very, all throughout it's also very time to, that, that this community has always had a hardened mind for you. But also there's some lovely things, like we saw the diversity in applications for the sponsorships that come from youth to seniors. So, um, the plan also addresses those kinds of things. And there are many dimensions of that plan, so it's capable to unpack it and perhaps has our own action plan to unpack. Got it? Commissioner, please.
Uh, I have a question. Is all our funding tied to, um, grants and the city budget?
Of the funding for Dr. Phil's office?
Yeah.
Uh, we don't have any grants. Um, what, I mean, it would just be, uh, that federal funding. Um, and that's just specific for this, you know, this year. Uh, but yes, most of our, uh, a hundred percent of our budget is from the general lines of the state budget.
Yeah, so I know the city is, is in development at their budget, and thank you for clarifying, because all this money that we, we have received to do this work, which is upwards of a million dollars, which is phenomenal, is part of the economic recovery. And so how do we look beyond our future years, continuing to do this work? That's, uh, and, and, and continue to look at some of those things that we were doing, and then what we want to continue to build. Because also, looking ahead, not that I necessarily need here, but what is the next iteration of that plan? We want to keep it alive and well, not put investment show.
Question, uh, for anyone, a question, uh, in terms of what are our advocacy? We happen to engage in advocacy to communicate, for instance, um, you know, how, how powerful the sponsorship applications were. And then we hope the city would consider making that, you know, permanent, um, program for, um, the, uh, I'm just curious if anyone has any ideas about what our advocacy is needed or how can be created about that?
I'd like to add, um, I would like to see us, and I'm going to, and Tran, I'm going to direct this toward you to add what you're saying, um, Commissioner Russell. Is it possible for, like, we're all acquainted by city council members, is it possible to be able to file an annual report to the city council? Where we, that we, where we talk about the work and we're able to share, write stuff with things as a way for them to see and understand and know this work and the economic impact for the arts and community. So that when they're doing budget development, that we have our consideration as opposed to working individually. Um, and we have collectively sent letters to the city council, but in a way that we can be part of the broader, ongoing conversation and consideration budget. Is that possible?
Yes, I think we can, um, do a, a quick, you know, even on PowerPoint or something to show, uh, what, yeah, what we've accomplished and what were their results.
Yeah, so like some kind of annual city council report of the commission and perhaps, you know, the rotation of all the commissions that certainly arts mission, you know, to share.
Uh, I really love, it's a, they can, they, uh, also, uh, some.
Absolutely. That's what I therefore.
It's not like violation.
Oh, no, no, it's for you to report back, the priorities and the concerns and all of that, you know, and then try and step back to your perspective.
Okay, this, or I just want to add one more thing, um. I guess in regards to advocacy, um, I think it's up to a lot of us to encourage more people to get involved, and I try to do that as well. Um, and one thing that I noticed at Tuesday's city council meeting, um, so one of the topics that was discussed was, um, the battle of fireworks. Um, it was a pretty big topic. Lots of people were talking about it. And one of the questions was, why is there such a big dependency for all these music, arts, sports programs to need to have that fundraiser? You know, um, so I think at the same time, I think it's an opportunity for us to get that community involved, to ad, to advocate for money, because that just showed that the necessity is there, but it might not be conveying the message at the right place. And I think this, us and this space could be a place for them to advocate that.
I think that our role, our, um, um, not just to report back, to also persuade our council members of the importance. So I do think we should, I also want to encourage, um, more engagement from, um, recipients of the small street grants or youth grants. Um, and I just love that we have some of the logics who did come. I, um, I want more information, I want pictures, uh, data points, like numbers of, um, different community members who, um, and their testimonials of how amazing it was. Um, because I know I hear from events, uh, like the one, um, posted that you see, um, people connect, um, who, you know, they're from the same town, um, another country. And, uh, you know, they, they find these connections to each other at events that you post, um, here. And so I just think those stories are, are really important, particularly the exits, uh, where we tend to make an exit in this pandemic and the traumas that have occurred, um, that we are still invested in people in those kinds of connected ways. As long as the arts are great too, but I think the opportunities of the arts creates for those connection, human community, we need to get as many people as possible to back that up.
I agree. You have to tell the story of what we do. And, and I know that, um, Tran has, we have some social media. If we're able to capture and collect any work to post and talk about things that are happening, get artists connected to that, so we can elevate the visual profile. And have some, without the staffing and funding, this is, this is catch twenty-two, right? Without the staffing and funding, how do you have the people power to be able to capture this day, to do the story, if you have, um, staffing? Uh, we're all volunteers, so, um, I know when I'm tired, I work my full-time job. So what, what can we do? What can we do when I'm hurting right now, and then also in the future? To be able to tell the story and get a little bit of, and, and show the great work that is happening, let's send a generate more of that, please.
Yeah, I, I agree with a lot of comments, all comments, everybody has been sharing, um. You know, I was, I was, you know, we're doing an email that was sent by Tran a year ago, you know, kind of lies. We're first getting on and, um, you know, just seeing the things that we've accomplished and the things that, um, not that we are being subsidized, fair to say that a lot has been accomplished. Also fair to say that a lot more could have been accomplished had we had, uh, had a good funding, right? So let's see, that's a testament to staff, of course, you know, how they've been able to push things along as people have come and gone on this, uh, commission. Uh, it's, it's, it's who's us to, to do as much as we can while we're here as chairman there. Actually, we're going to be here for who knows how long, in my case, uh, maybe not that, I was wondering, uh, you know, but, and that's, uh, so the, the, the reality is, thanks to the hundred thousand dollars that we received, we have made leaps and bounds as far as engaging, breaking the barriers and, uh, and, and, and creating, you know, spaces, places for, for art and culture to thrive. And so, you know, just establishing that, um, regular line item budget type of situation, often the general budget for the city is probably, would, um, should be the art world priority. And then this current moment, uh, elections matter, and so the next election, we could, um, we could lose out. This is the reality. So, um, Mayor Samiento, it's not going to be the mayor, uh, you know, in a short time, so you know, whoever's going to be the next mayor will take, or, you know, or, or, you know, set the tone for what the priorities are. Now, everybody is, is looking to invest in you, you know, or or, you know, take funds away from leasing. And, uh, and the reactionary ways of addressing public health and, you know, want, want to switch to, um, well, you know, and, and doing this proactive kind of, uh, model where this investing in youth, investing in art, and investment culture is the way that we address, you know, a crime or, you know, uh, marginalization and, and other, you know, and mental health and all the, the issues, social bills of our communities, um. So I'm very, I'm personally working as hard as I can and try to push that conversation forward. And right, one of the challenges is that there's always something going on, you know, there's always been, on the city council, so the agenda. But this is important, um. Also think about, you know, the opportunity for the cannabis, uh, funds to be allocated for these types of programs. From the taxes of that, again, you know, it's not, uh, we prioritize art and culture and youth programming and youth art programming, because I do know that there's, there was recently some shifting toward, toward you from, from the cannabis ones. Uh, so the intersection between youth and arts are just being one and the same in a lot of ways, I think this is an opportunity for us, so, you know, I said a lot, but I was kind of trying to regain this, I, I know I've said a lot about this in the past, and this is kind of, um, the stall on mine, I mean, it's, but and trying to push this forward, but as I take a step, to listen to what we were saying, to just, to understand why we've gone through so far with this hundred thousand. If we, if we have another hundred thousand next year, or if we have three hundred thousand, you know, and we're able to fund all these new organizations, which we did, uh, through these, these monies, that would have never gotten funded before, and, um, that we're going to make leaps and bounds in, in trying to, you know, really, you know, address the essence of the art master plan. Do as much as we can a few years later. And the last comment I'll make is, I think, telling our story, as you mentioned, Jerry here, uh, but also, you know, just lacking data, you know, that's really important, so. And also being able to invite more people. So I really would love to see the art and culture commission in our meetings and our successes be promoted through the cities, sometimes, uh, social media, Instagram, Facebook, a lot more at all, uh, so that we can, you know, just, uh, invite more participation in this. I, I know that there's a lot of arts and culture organizations out there, groups that, you know, after the fact, almost like, I wish I would have known about this. Like, I've been trying to tell you all that, um, but I think, I think we may reach about the really productive work that we've done in a short amount of time. I think we can give a lot more in, in the coming months. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on the discussion about this item at this time?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Um, I think this is a, really, if this show, we were sure that we slowly, I mean, it's, to, to sit down and learn to get, uh, and then present to the rest of the commission, priorities, we think that, we look at, this, this last year. And, and we had a, a certain priorities in that process, but I think that process happened with all the members of the commission is based on a dual, um, offer. It took, um, it took almost three hours for us to, to announce some priorities. And so I think that a subcommittee were being a little aware of what we're going to start with. Just that we could have a master plan, identify and work in the priorities. And maybe one or two ways to, um, meet those goals of the master plan, um, so that we can be ready to pack on them if it's possible.
Right. I'm aligned with that. So I would like to ask who would like to serve me, um, through. Commissioner Lu. Perhaps one more, or do you want, is there anything else? I mean, my person, you do that work, and then I presented to the, to the commission, uh, if there is anybody else who wants to generate, you can have up to three minutes.
I'd be interested if I'm going to worry about the same position, like, to, Jose, that I'm a knowledge holder of a year, because I was only, uh, what do you call it? Um, yeah, temporary term. I'm the person that appointed me, so I don't want to manage that.
So the reality of it honestly is, I'm going to work as if I'm going to stay here at work, even if I know what my term is pending. I'm not going, I'm, I'm going to choose to just keep pushing forward and hopefully be able to transition to somebody or lead somebody, for somebody who's not. So I invite you to work as long as you can work until such time that, that you're not. And hopefully we'll have that infrastructure, because we're creating something that we can build on, that we can afford. So that, that's my personal approach, but I, I think I would choose what's best for you and.
I think technically you have until the center, so from now to the center. That's a few months, so.
I suppose September.
Now, is it?
So that's the only thing on time? Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So Commissioner, you want to do it, Commissioner Lu?
Sure.
Awesome. All right. Anybody else? Another question? All right, so we now have a formal panel committee, which will be Commissioner, Commissioner Torres, who will decide to be next to the Arts and Culture Master Plan and bring back some recommendations to us. One, thank you. Is there any other comments and questions? And we will move on.
If, uh, I'm interested in serving, I feel like I served a lot previously, so, you know, I also worry about capacity, frankly, of, of things that I have going on in my personal life, but very interested in supporting, uh, would, if in the future, uh, would want to be involved and could I, uh, uh, be, uh, committed or if, um, could I, could I join in the league?
I believe so, yeah. As long as it doesn't include the three people, the commissioners.
I would totally support that, in fact, as three people plan or consider, if you can't make it, maybe go with it, and we'll all have a forum. And your ability to talk amongst yourselves, even if it's not going to fall in the meeting, you can share documents or whatever. I, I know, like, the three of us wrote a letter to the city council, we did it mostly via Google, under the ducks, sure. So, you know, you could have many, pandemic, as you said, is how many ways to collaborate, not just, um, meetings. So I trust you'll be creative as creatives to, regardless, to get input, and that, and I welcome you to be on the panel. All right. All right, without further ado. Does the staff have any comments they would just share with the commission?
Yes, I do have a bunch of updates. It's, I know, and to that, all of what you were talking about, I shared that, it's a big one, reiterate in my, uh, presentation. Just remind you of the really wonderful proper work that you did and effective work we did. in my uh presentation, just remind you of the really wonderful artwork work that you did, effective work we did such a short amount of time, it was like very, very fun, we're going up, and it showed how much it was necessary of, you know, this money and I had actually thought of it like a pipeline for these artists to get their feet wet, to do that, you know, and then to grant them up so that in the future they can ask for more money in grants. But to start them off with with, let's say, I'm sorry, sponsorship money first. Can you go to the, yes, you go next slide please. And so this is the art project, oh, I know this has been obvious since we had this last meeting. Um, the total applicants were seventy, that's a lot, sort of, that came in, you accepted thirty-one out of seventy, uh and the total amount of charity was a hundred thousand. Next slide please. Um highlights, fifty-five percent of the sponsors had never received any state funding prior to the sponsorship, that's huge. And five different associations from four different awards applied, who are all awarded funding, so we were very mindful of that to give it to to spread out the the funding, and so they have a hundred percent of awarded, uh being awarded. And and also another big win for us, the partner in Parks and Rec waived the permanent fees, that can be up to twelve hundred, eighteen hundred dollars. I think sometimes people forget how much, uh when they say, oh, we just waived the permanent fees, you know, how much the city is giving up in terms of revenue every time organization says, why don't you just help us out, why are you putting the permanent fees? So they were able, they did that, um because they they wanted to support these artists and that all their funding that they're giving, it's not gonna go back to the city, but they can spend it on the event itself, so that that partnership is carried for to our artists' grant. Uh next slide. Okay, so these are upcoming opportunities. Uh investing in our support, which Commissioner Flores and Commissioner, uh Mr. Hernandez were there, thank you for attending, uh the Buena Fiera. Just to refresh everybody's memory, uh the budget is between two thousand dollars, which we've never had before. Uh thanks to Dubai and um art funding, very, very bad amount. It used to just be between seventy to eighty thousand dollars. Uh we want to support individual artists and nonprofits. Um and this year, because of the theme and because of the funding, the all the projects must be outdoors. Uh we did make available twenty-two parks and parklets in downtown LA, I'm entirely concerned in that. But the parklets, um are the ones that come out to the street, you know, that are extensions of the of the restaurants, uh they don't have to use that, our organizations or artists don't have to use those, but we're making them available, again, part of the Parks and Rec and downtown LA design. Um but they can be creative and if their organization has courtyard or parking lot, anything like that, they can use those. Uh and the deadline is May ninth, so there's a bit of time. Uh next slide please. So, um we had three information sessions, which are mandatory to put them to apply to grant, which has asked the two commissioners who attended noticed a lot of information, a lot of questions, a lot of process because of the grant, um so we required that everybody's there, so that everybody's on the same page. And it won't be like, they wasted all their time finding something, and then they're going, you know, uh not following the qualifications. Uh but we had over a hundred attendees, um so they're not all gonna apply, as you know, but, uh you know, this is huge amount compared to the past years, so I'm looking forward to really exciting projects coming through. Next slide please. Uh but the uh the new uh RFE that is in the East that soon after our artist grant was released is uh phase two of South Main Public Art Initiative, and so you had mentioned seeing it on our social media, and it was like, what? So, phase one was to collect, you know, a general um public art, which you had all done, you want general public art proposals. But then public works realized that there are some parts of that construction program, uh the project, that they wanted to focus on, and that they didn't see as many uh or any uh proposals, um they the ones that they wanted to get more of, and they realized that not very many people were adhering to the historic theme that they were hoping people would would do design more around, especially with art. Uh and then sidewalk poetry and crosswalk art. And so they were looking for artists, artists came to the connections or ties to Santa Ana, they were just don't have to live or work in Santa Ana, but have ties to it, to um to submit original designs and poems to be along that same route, South Main Street, New York Street, and Dyre Street. They want, we want to make a perspective, relationships and narrative of our community. Um so that to hopefully more residents participate this time, especially with the sidewalk poetry or any of the other designs, the the action is super simple, unlike the artist's grant. There is no budget, no timeline, nothing like that, all they have to do is submit their art, order their poem, and then a narrative of how the next two Santa Ana, really is it, so please, please encourage the folks to apply. And the minimum age of it is eighteen, so I'm sure a lot of folks, you know, those youths, you know, tell them to apply. Submit their poems, submit a digital art design. And the goal is so that as residents and visitors walk along the corridor there, they unexpectedly discover some of these inspiring poems, enlighten the history as they're waiting for the bus, or, you know, be dazzled by the crosswalk designs, everyone would be surprisingly lighted in a course, um program, you know, to highlight the city and bring more tourists, because there's uh next slide please. Okay, so the first one is the bus shelter, and that we put, the artwork will be put on the back of that, where you see the blue design there, that bus shelter, with a QR code that will lead to the history that that artwork is is pending, so hopefully some historic, uh we did include a list of the history, uh the sort of links to different histories along that South Main corridor, as we did the first time around, so hopefully people can walk back, do their design and have people that needs to tell more about that part of South Main. And there'll be up to seventeen um uh part of us, bus shelters, you know, some questions about that. Yes, um because I know we did have some artists, more than one, who submitted bus shelter art and sort of phase one. Um are they still? They're still being there, yeah. And and so, um if there were any concerns, if they felt like they, um you know, their idea was gonna be minimized, because now other people are kind of sort of taking that idea that they felt was original, and how does they, how's it South Main team, I guess, in that context? Um, they will, yeah, they're sort of considering all of it, it's not being diminished or minimized or excluded. It's still part of the the whole. Um, any other questions, I'll answer one. Okay, next slide please. Um sidewalk poetry is, we will be sandblasting, um these poems, and we have, we have parameters, it could be no more than a hundred and sixty characters. I think it'd be five lines long, they must answer responsibly, what is home, certainly private, you know, but also what what height, the you know, people's feelings about Santa Ana and how they feel this is home. Um and uh and, you know, reflecting on all of our culture history. Uh and so it's sandblasted into this, into the the concrete, um and so it'll be there for a long time. Um all and all of them are scheduled for this, that all these designs and poems, if they're submitted, oh, they all will be awarded, uh one thousand five hundred dollars each, one hundred each. So, and they can apply for all three if they want to. And for each of these, they can apply up to three design, up to three poems, up to three design, that's three, but they have to submit in separate applications. Okay, next please. And the final one is crosswalk art, um again, it is, you know, there's, I believe, up to like twenty crosswalks, I can't remember. But there's gonna be a lot of opportunities for people to showcase their work, but some might double up, and it all depends on what is being submitted and what the crosswalks are. Uh yeah, so, and again, that will be sandblasted, and as you said, right there, you see there is white, but in our sandblasting they're, they have the intention to be submitted in only black, uh grays and blacks, because we're we're not gonna put color into sandblasting. Yeah, so that is just the way. And finally, uh well, before we get onto this, any questions about this call, this call, this one, I think it'll be, uh the deadline is May twenty-sixth. May twenty-third. Or is it like that, twenty-third, no? Yes.
Well, we have access to this presentation or no?
Yes, I can send it to you.
And she says, but I just wanna confirm, they have, the artists who we asked, they want to be seen, no?
Yes. Okay, yes, okay, and I want to invite you this weekend, we're super busy, but this weekend we do have free grant writing workshop for anybody, we will focus on the artist grant, though, that was released. Um but meaning if they written, you know, the narrative order, they weren't bringing it for feedback, that's what we're there for, that anybody else can come just to learn how to write effective and successful grants. It will be at, um from nine to twelve at New Hope Library in Santa Ana, in the street party, and I believe we're gonna provide some light refreshments that need watering mats, but still, so, um yeah, registered, but I'll send you this. Yeah, and next. And this one is very cool, too, this is next Saturday, not this Saturday, next Saturday, intended to, this one will have a lot of food, this, this, I we've partnered with Oasis before, and we've done this very same workshop. It is not just financial literacy, although that is the foundation of this kind of workshop for a lot of artists. You know, we we're not as fluent in financial, you know, stuff, you know, we just work hard, do our our craft and, you know, sell it or whatever we want. But I think that's part of the issue is that sometimes we forget, and I learned from a really cool's talk, that there's a difference between be creative and be artistic, a lot of our artists are super artistic, but they're not necessarily creative about how they think outside of the box to increase, bring in uh income or expand their craft and their art, you know, they're just accepting their silos of my paints and this is what I do, that's all I wanna do, you know, and so we're hoping that this one that think beyond that, think outside the box of how they can grow and expand themselves as businesses, as artists. Um through financial, having some financial security along with it, so that's why we call the creative professional capacity goal, you might think to many people, well, what does that mean? So ho- hopefully you can help explain that as you share this in your uh social media and all of that, um. But yeah, we want to see them thrive, uh as as a business, as a market, that's what what I pride their place artists place under, and under longer, their micro businesses, so, yeah, hopefully they'll go that way. This one is also free, it will be at Southwest Senior Center at Jerome Park. Um yeah, and I hope that they will come, this one's cool, because usually what they do is they have different tables and then you rotate, so you learn like different aspects, run a whole day. Yeah. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Sharon. Yeah, this is the annual agenda for the commission of comments. We'll start um with three minutes for each person, and then we'll share your time. Additional comments is needed, um but then we have to start our final comments. I am, yeah. I'm in the commission.
All right, I'll start, I'll start off. Uh so I want to say happy Easter to everyone who celebrates, and happy spring to everyone who residents or are recent. Um, I actually want, wanna talk about a topic, um that might be a little controversial. But, you know, because we are here to promote culture, um you know, I just wanna say that uh the purpose of this is to promote it in a positive way, hopefully change the light uh behind it. Uh because it was requested, can we speak about it from a resident in the city? Um, so right now, we're in the middle of Easter and the middle of spring, uh Easter was this weekend, but that also starts um the season in Southern California of classic cars, low riders and cruising. Um for the last thirty years or more, this has been a controversial topic for the city of Santa Ana and its residents. Some people love it, some people hate it. However, regardless of how you feel, it is probably not only the Santa Ana culture, but also Southern California. And I think we need to reexamine how the city handles matters related to this topic. There are so many things that make Santa Ana great, and I think the city of Santa Ana should find a way to embrace this culture in a safe and responsible manner. This week, the general plan was adopted after forty years of the rebranding of the Golden City. This is a perfect chance to find ways to work with the classic car and low rider community, to reinvigorate the city's diversity and uplift the city's economy. Earlier in the year, as a commission, we helped the city's public works agency assess our proposals to be owned by the South Main street region, which is an area being oriented in the general plan, and one of the themes highlighted was uh Santa Ana's car history. Which I was encouraged to see, however, I don't understand how you provided the culture of the car scene and then shut down the streets of central Santa Ana, very major holiday from Easter to Halloween, so. I understand that the harsh stress was taken to combat the crime abuses created back in the day, but we live in a different role now. Just last week, National City worked out a deal for scheduled and controlled cruises that take place uh uh certain times of the week and certain, during certain times. I think it would be a missed opportunity for the city not to collaborate with the people of the car scene and change the perception of what cruising is. Never forgetting that the objective is to do it responsibly and give it back to the community. Many of these car clubs already house food and toy places, giveaways within the city during the holidays, and let their hand very vulnerable to the car wash, we can read this. I hope this serves as a conversation starter, uh in a positive direction, and it's for nature.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Flores. Any else? Commissioner.
Thank you for sharing that, um that I agree completely that um it's a part of our history at the city, in fact, I have three members I've been teaching in, uh that activity as a youth. Uh and I do think it's a way to bring a lot of different generations together. Uh I say that because a band of the audience member whose grandparents, um you know, that's a part of their culture, and I think the other, uh what I underscore is, is taking something from a very typical traditional American culture, but it's making it creative. Because um there's so much creativity that's involved in design and customization and um then, you know, just imagining um things and uh it can be a beautiful thing, uh to have, uh we're not South Main, but maybe more broadly on Bristol. Uh also wanted to wish anyone celebrating how it passed the, so next year comes the end of that celebration. Um and from my comment, I just wanted to uh note that, um I have the great privilege to attend alongside Chair McNeer the Creative Edge Lecture, uh that was recently held a month ago, um at UCI, and the speaker was from the Calvary Arts Council. You see, right, um and the, one of the main ideas that I thought was that interesting, particularly with the vibe of my freshman role is the emphasis on how creativity is important, which we, you know, has become cliche, right, say, oh, no, no, again. But this speaker, um he really talked about how schools, he presented a way to think about it, how schools might even be valued based on some kind of a creativity factor or a metric or measure. And I I think it's a very interesting idea, I think Santa Ana with the equity, um for the arts initiative, um is leaving, you know, Santa Ana district is leaving a way for that, and I think, um we, being this as a city, it would not understand that this is there's a very, very likelihood that parents one day that they're evaluating to send their children to our total goal, and which is a great concern for anyone in the K twelve community right now, as moments are down all over the country. Um that we need to show that, uh we emphasize that we are a city of the arts, that our schools are where the arts are, are just any kind of art that you can possibly imagine, so people have access to those from K, pre-K, um right, uh all the way through, um and that to go with that, we need to, we need schools to be invested, but we're also in our city to support that, so that there's that comprehensive factor, so. Um I hope you share some of your thoughts on that, but I wanted everyone to know that that was something that's happening in the community at UCI, and I believe that we should be.
Thank you, Commissioner Russell. Commissioner.
I'm sure I've seen you, I'm sure that I was part of the public school generation where I was at the art school, which is we had our classes once a month, if that, um choir once every other week, if that, if there's a role, and this was, that this was at the schools that seem to deserve learning also, and so I believe we have to be continued to generations, but I think the public schools, you know, who never get a chance to not just experience drugs and Not just experience that in a very superficial way as far as assignments, but see the true value of. Being what we create and being being exposed to. The multifaceted levels of art and how that can be served, not only in the community. But how that can be used to activate your community, to communicate with the community. To communicate alongside a community force and stuff like that. And so I am one hundred percent in um. Favorite of this rewriting schools as a way of re- rewriting schools and measuring them with some of the creativity, not only on the practical achievements. Because we see the average that is too skewed. The way that they are over engaged in schools in white, merely and surely just as. A way of proving some sort of value or worth. Um and that that's been clearly one of the objectives so far. Um and also, and I want to invite you all, I know you can send a few of your ideas up. Um to for all the shared efforts. Um theorizing organization in their heart is supposed to make the art contest. Where you go through years who will be getting their prizes as well. And they um what we are looking for is for a booster or a toy we design. Um that can be printed as stickers that promotes our neighborhood to get vaccinated. Um because boosters are a logo now for everyone, um before you try to move for a range of our food. When slowly our students get vaccinated and use it as much as possible, which can follow us as much as we can. From just one home um and. The winner does get this um printed as two thousand stickers and I believe fifty of those that will contribute to local art careers and.
Beautiful, thank you, Commissioner. Any additional questions? This way, if I was chair of the.
Yeah, my chair, um. Wanted to say that um my comment about being volatile for Commissioner Russell was not. Uh was facetious and not meant to be offensive in any way. Um at our time, so being this professional. Uh but uh but no, it's a it's it's true that uh you know, sometimes people have to be volatile. Other what, you know, they don't know what they're capable of doing, so they're asked by somebody to do something. No, they do it, they realize how fun of us, how we're more in votes, again, as parents, I think folks know that very well. Uh but also, as uncles and mentors and you know, people in the community that know folks that. You know, need to know what's your match, what can match, let's do this, let's get it done. Uh I also want to thank uh uh Chairman, you have a great report of that, I thought it was something that I had brought back and brought uh. Was interesting here, like this, you know, just uh. I was just concerned for for a couple months there. Where this status of that was, you know, I definitely understand and um and empathize just the reality that. Uh we're trying to get our life back after the pandemic, a lot of us, you know, just kind of started to get uh. Comfortable, like people to be learned, socialized, you know, personnel. So and and just everything that's kind of feels like uh. It was a dam of, you know, that was held up when during the pandemic and then. Everything, you know, now that things opened up, it's just a dam broke open and now we're getting flooded with all this amazing opportunities to overload. Um you know, just the rapidness of of life in that has. One of the things I also support for my culture and some kind of. You know, just just so often seems that are are the things of our culture in Santa Ana, you know, Chicano. This criminalized stuff and yeah, perhaps there are, you know, aspects of it that weren't great. Uh or some people take advantage of the freedoms, but also just this lack of generalization of the things that are so beautiful. About our culture constantly seem to be looked down on. Uh open and when other things happen by other people. Celebrations, um by college students, there's a celebration by us, that's something that are considered riots, maybe considered, you know, boisterous. Rowdy crafts, so that does not escape me uh. Also, this issue of fireworks is really interesting because it is also a very uh unique part of the culture here in Santa. Um. Where else in Inores County can you just, you know, enjoy that, because they were just blowing stuff up? And it was pretty excessive, I will say, during like the first time of the pandemic, the first year. Because people were trapped, frustrated, angry, and they wanted to blow stuff up, uh not, I can understand that, but. But you know, but in in all seriousness. It is also a very real issue of the air quality, but then there's factories and that's, you know. Commissioner Flores uh you know, can attest to the environmental justice hysteria to market, there are other communities very real, so. It is concerning uh the pollution from that. But more concerning to me is that our schools, our students have to depend so much on that and those problems are not happening. Other communities, um so that upsets me, we should have some kind of balance in that. But I don't think we'll have any on that uh as a community as a whole. And the last thing I want to mention is uh uh two things, one is that I, along with the other. Uh folks in the community are are getting together to do the uh La calle, La calle Cuatofest, La Cuatofest on June. Eleven, it's Saturday, so we're currently looking for new performers to to come and be a part of it and. Uh they will be recording uh the performance today at Pub so that they can take home, so that's really nice incentive, but. Very much interested in building a bridge between young people and people that are in the industry that are making money off of their art. Uh and so there's there's a great talent in our communities and. And and they should be, they should know and see how, not just performers, but people that are behind scenes. That are recording while video recorders can participate in that, so very interesting and and you know, all chat information. Hopefully it will be shared uh by by the commissioners and fellow commissioners in the community. And uh and then on June fourth. We will put up these markets, we will receive the grant from this commission. Will be having their Santa, uh their twentieth annual Santa Zoo uh picnic, picnic at the zoo. Um they're a great organization, happily my parents' organization, happily this they're just at the city council where. Uh received the proclamation as autism awareness, my. Lot to be said about that, but you know, that is one aspect of, and perhaps one unknown for a lot of years in the city. You know, the importance that my parents' organization, other organizations have around autism awareness and providing uh. Just entertainment and um community, bringing people together, going to the city, which you'd be surprised how how people. Live in Santa Ana or around Santa Ana, but never been to our city, who else has been to Santa Ana? So that those will conclude my comments, thank you, everybody, and thank you staff for helping.
Thank you so much, all commissioners, I just really so appreciate the depth of my. To the meaning and heartfelt passion about all the many festivals in our community. Uh I am gonna really have to have some help very much in my time, because I have so much I can say at home, top of mind, you know. Start my little house with the schools and with you. So a couple of things I want to tap into, um where do I start, right? For my day job interests and my volunteers in here on the commission. I want to thank everybody who supported both of the areas, it's the first time I knew I had a chance to get up, definitely in our public schools. I had a chance to get up into the city and and it was one of the juxtapositions, see them in their beautiful costumes. Walking along the construction that's in hand, the family showed up, it's it's healing, it's coming together, it's they they were hungry. Our students and families were hungry for these opportunities and I'm so excited for the ones that have been mentioned and others who can be. Elevate and amplify, and when I first started. Um the school district. Eight years ago, yeah, about eight years ago now, but I was involved in the original arts and culture master plan, but then I went to community farms. The only thing I ever heard was about the private charter school in Santa Ana and the arts there, which. But there's love in this place to all, and I was like, what's that for the public schools? So we have worked very hard to make the arts a priority in Santa Ana by the school district. And I would love to spend any amount of time talking to anyone about our master plan, about our own strategic plan, about the investment that our school board. And our school district has has made into that, uh one of the highlights to celebrate, for example, is that every single student. In Santa Ana by TK five is receiving a free heated instruction during the instruction. That's a huge accomplishment, and the thing is, we as district have declared ourselves an economic access district. And the city of Santa Ana is our partner as a global access learning champion. So we continue to try to amplify and elevate and all come together around these really important topics. That um we're building pipelines and pathways and to that end, I did. Attend the Otis Report unveiling, which is very important to my day job and is so important to artists in the city. Because it talks about economic impact, one of the themes was the recovery and how creatives got creative about how to make the arts still happen despite. All the challenges economically that we faced. So we're, you know, the arts are coming back, we have so many economies to access, the sharing economy, experiential economy, data economy. Other things that we want to help and build and foster. Uh I also attended an arts meeting and entertainment conference where we were talking about the future of storytelling, what that means, what it looks like. And the kinds of experiences artistically that are no longer in the traditional ways of accessing, it's helped us really broaden what we're doing, so. I'm excited about those possibilities and what this commission feels and is is pushing for. Historical purposes for us to continue to build a foundation for our youth to access, because we sit in the US creative economy capital. There are billions of dollars worth of industry right in our backyard, because Los Angeles is the capital, we are by extension part of that. The reality is that there are kids from the Midwest accessing people from from other out of California and none of our school system yet are accessing those jobs. And so I mean, I personally should also make sure we're building those schools for our students to be able to access that in our youth and our community. I welcome everyone helping, these are kind of the bugs of me, so you know. You're all part of the SCSCRX fam to help this. Uh and in addition, I went to the Creative Edge Lecture, which was very inspiring and talking about the importance of. Uh arts education and that creativity index, so I volunteer and say, but. Because why not, make that, that was me in the crowd. Because I would love to see what we can do to help build that that capacity and for the first time too, in Santa Ana, we are starting. Assessment in the arts based on the California Arts Standards Framework, which has a lot of standards in the systems of grades two and grades five, grades eight, and then in high school. Because we measure what we treasure and one of the challenges in the school system and why some of our commissioners who have school setting lost funding is because. They're not, they weren't standardized tests, right? Well, we're not going in the direction of standardized tests, we're going for programmatic assessment and data collection. I don't want to be very hard in the school district to have data around arts education, which hasn't happened in the past, so how do you amalgamate the. Beauty of the creative and how people deal with sometimes in all our fluffiness with balancing it with the actual. Realities of business, like uh Tran was saying, some of our artists don't necessarily know the business part of it, but financial literacy, all the literacy to have to build and can. And are trying to do that in the school district and for our students. And that and and so uh I lost my train of thought. So that's all the time that's coming to a close, because I do like that, I'm sorry, I'm on my soapbox, but I'm very passionate, if you can't tell, about building these opportunities. In our community and leveraging whatever we can and partnering in the broader sense. So that's I want to conclude with this um the excitement that I have about this coming economic impact study. That the city of Santa Ana has committed to, because I think it's going to be a partnering. Data collection to show what that economic impact is and when you have data that stays long, that helps people activate around the dream, so yes, let's. Find ways to continue to get data and bring that together and um. And also, the last thing about the cars, I love that you brought that up, because the way that they are, even they're visual art, right? You can see them, they're visual art and it's in our vida la vida and some of our community events. And we don't want to include any form of art that we have in our spare sleep. So um and I'm excited too, the the school district um having ethnic studies as a graduation requirement. That we have created uh two board approved arts courses already and we are continuing to add to those. So our students will be able to have, meet a graduation party to to have art, so a hundred percent of high school students will have these one arts course. And they can also achieve their considers graduation requirements, so nobody be included for being able to have arts education in other schools. So we're doing a lot of work internally and that's what we want to help connect to. Um this very important economic, economic, economic scene. So thank you for the work that you're all doing to help move that forward and. About any further comments, my apologies for all the airtime tonight. This evening is officially adjourned. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, the nineteenth, at five thirty in the camp. Thank you, have a good night, thanks for those of you who joined us, actually.